If I could have everyone's attention, first of all, you can see that we're going to have a hip council meeting tonight. So some exciting things that are coming down, but we have three proclamations. And the first one will be honoring junior achievement. And because Charlotte here participated in. Charlotte, Scarlett, yeah, I kept calling her Charlotte, sorry about that. Scarlett participated in junior's achievement this year in her first grade Mrs. Tharps class. And as a result, since we're honoring junior achievement, I thought it was best if we have a junior achievement graduate dabbled in the council. Would you do that? All right, and if you want, you can go back with your dad and sister if you want, or you could stay here, either way. Okay, first of all, call the order, roll call, we're joined by council member Martinez, council member Schultz, council member Dominguez, and council member Preisek. Council Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin had some appointments tonight and is excused for the meeting. So next up is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda, which constitutes the city council minutes of three eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is approved. Next up is the merro- merroreal proclamation for junior achievement. And it was in your packet and is available for reading, so if there are any questions, I would be glad to answer those questions. And if you haven't participated, it is a wonderful experience. It constitutes, I think, five visits to a classroom and going over an agenda that is given to you. And it's a great opportunity to interact with several levels in our school system. All right, the next one is honoring Saint Joseph's Catholic Church. And we have the proclamation here, the other night I was honored to be at Saint Joseph's when they celebrated seventy-five years in the location that they're in now. And so we thought that it was very fitting for the city of West Liberty to honor Saint Joseph's. And also, they had a drum corps, or I think there's another name for it, part of the celebration that I thought was something that the council should see as well. So with that, I'll recognize council member Martinez to talk a little bit more.
So tonight we have Nanasa de Potos Socorro. We're all originated pretty much from our hometown of Mexico. So it's traditions that come back from our homeland and bring it here and represent the church. Every time there's special dates that come about and dance for certain saints in the church. And obviously, the father is one of those, make sure we come out and like to show you guys a little bit of what we represent and our culture.
Council member Martinez kept hidden from me his talent as a drummer as well, and that's worth seeing. So with that, we have the drum corps perform for us. All right, one more proclamation is in your packet too, and this is child abuse prevention. Yeah, so it's in the packet. I am in my fifty, I have to count up to how many, I think fifty-second year of being an Iowa social worker, and I've investigated child abuse. And know that that's something that our police give in their reports every month of. And they reported a great working relationship with the Department of Human Health and Human Services in protecting Iowa's children. So this proclamation is important so that we continue our efforts here in West Liberty to protect our children and to recognize the important work of professionals in preventing the abuse of children. All right, next up is item number seven, the public hearing on the proposed to enter into a general obligation municipal building loan agreement. Is there a motion to move into a public hearing?
Motion to move into a public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Preisek?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we're now open for public comments and/or correspondence. Is there any public com- are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing none, we will move to correspondence. Has anyone on the council or city administration received any correspondence on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Preisek?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, next up is item seven, three, eight, resolution twenty twenty-five, zero, four, zero, one, hyphen, two, three, two. A resolution taking additional action on proposal to enter into a general obligation municipal building loan agreement and providing for a levy of taxes to pay principal and interest there under. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
Preisek?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, next up is item number eight, a public hearing. And it is to open the public hearing on Evans Avenue sanitary sewer extension. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Preisek?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, we're now into the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would open it to the city engineer, if there's any piece that we, or any part of communication that's going into the project.
The only thing I would say is the cost estimate for this is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars plus some contingencies. And it bids on April ninth. And then if we get good bids, we're gonna take them back to the council on April fifteenth. Project's supposed to be complete by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence. Have any of the members of the council or city administration received any correspondence on this matter?
No.
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, I would take a motion to close the public hearing on the Evans Avenue sanitary sewer extension.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion or discussions, excuse me? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Preisek?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, now we're to reports, and first one up is city engineer. Oh, I'm sorry.
So below the clothes.
Ah, thank you, yes, I knew I was going to forget that. All right, so we need action on resolution twenty twenty-five, zero, four, zero, one, hyphen, two, three, three. A resolution approving the plans, specifications, and cost estimates for the Evans Avenue Gravity Sanitary Sewer Extension. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Preisek?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, then we move to the city reports, and first up is city engineer Leo Golding.
Thank you, I might as well start with well number two. So the acid is in the well.
Okay.
We understand things are going very well with that, so everybody keep their fingers crossed. They're expecting to get quite a yield increase based on the other two. Hopefully things go well. Couple more days, we'll understand. So that's that one, hopefully, I've got one more report on that one. Then the next one is Four Street Watermane. We did get a comment today, there's a plume in Austin knew about it, of some contamination. And part of the project was to use Dr. Lion, we thought we were out of the plume. But DNR had some updated information that they gave us, that they want us to change some of the pipe back to Dr. Lion. But that's, that's a normal type of comment, shouldn't be any issue for us to move forward.
Okay.
And so that's the water main that, that Austin's been working with and developing. The next one, we've got the wastewater treatment plant and the rate study that are kind of going together. The wastewater treatment plant is moving forward. Our process engineer Mark Syke hasn't been in the office the last week or so, so I still need to walk, work with him and our electrical about whether we can do some of that building renovation, yeah. And that's the only part, rest of it seems to be moving along quite well. The rate study, we are essentially done, so we would probably ask the city manager for the, some time at the next meeting to go through the rate study. We think we've got rates, we've met with the city, we feel pretty good about that part of it. The other thing we have done is we did, Adam, Adam Reinhardt provided us some ideas on some parking concepts for the Spencer Four Street area. There's not a lot of good options, but we put some, a few things together that he asked us to put together, then we, then we put a few, a few out there ideas for you that will probably cost money, like for instance retaining walls, changing the curb lines, that type of thing, but it's something just to consider, so the city manager has that now. It, it's not a final product or anything like that, but it kind of gets everybody on the same page. Here, there's not a lot of locations that are easily turned into, to easy parking. But, yeah, anyway, that's all we had today unless anybody has any questions.
Um, the parking, was it specifically so residents could park overnight that live downtown or just in general?
I think it was in general, but I, I thought he was looking more for when there's lots of business downtown and where could people park.
Okay.
It was to accommodate the residents and in addition to that accommodate over flow from, for the businesses as well.
We actually started talking about this several years ago when it was, one business owner had approached with the three seventeen more Spencer project. And they had approached asking for diagonal parking in front of their building because they upgraded their apartments. And then in addition, it just kind of grew from there with the ordinance conversation that we had. And so we just kind of lumped it all in together to see what we could provide.
Thank you.
Working in, in small cities, everybody wants to be very, very close, you know? So it's funny, in bigger cities, you almost have a little more opportunity because people are willing to walk five blocks.
Yeah.
That's just not the case in most of Iowa's towns.
Yeah.
And I'm a dreamer, but the reason I was asking is because I was wondering what the old fire station, I know we, we do utilize that. I'm not sure with what, but like what the option would be to repurpose a parking ramp or, or something, where people would pay a monthly.
I looked at, I looked at that area and I was not thinking ramp, ramps are very, they're ten thousand dollars a spot usually.
Oh, geez Louise.
Very expensive, but I was thinking about repurposing the area for just additional parking, and I did look at that tonight.
Oh, okay.
So we were on the same page, but you were a little higher thought than I was, I wasn't thinking.
I didn't know it was ten thousand.
That's, that's the, that's the going rate for a lot of parking, it's just expensive as hell.
What's the railroad?
What's that?
The railroad?
Yes.
So because what's there is essentially the railroad's being comfortable with because the station was there. But they, we have to do a special bonding for our, our public property that's essentially sitting in the railroad right.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, so you saw the number of reports from departments in your packet tonight. So let me open it up, and we have department heads with us here tonight in case folks have questions. So any questions about the reports that are in your packet? Wish to bow over to the crowd, okay, well, very well done, so. Yes, there are not too many questions, yeah. Very much appreciate it. Anything to add from?
Well, you saw these, I think there's about four or five reports on like twenty-three on down to, say, twenty nineteen. Basically, all them reports are basically for bigger municipalities and total nitrogen, total phosphorus are a big deal. So that basically shows the rankings of where we're at.
Yeah.
As far as how good a job we're doing in that area, so.
Right.
So can you explain that too? Because I, I was looking at that too, and I was like, okay, I see where we are, but what is that?
Basically, it's a twelve months average, and we have so many samples per month. And basically calculate all them up divided by twelve, that gives you your yearly average. So for instance.
So is, is it good if we're more at the top?
We're way up on the top.
Okay, so that's a good thing.
You are, you are almost a display for the DNR on how well your system does using phosphorus and nitrogen. It's highly unusual to a lot of, the carousel system works very well and they do a great job of it. And I, I've heard the DNR at functions talk about West Liberty's system.
Oh, that's good to hear.
This year we had a, basically total phosphorus, we had ten pounds, and total nitrogen, we had one seventeen. And the limits are phosphorus thirteen, and total nitrogen is one fifty-seven. They're really good on total nitrogen, the phosphorus was a little closer, but well within the limits here.
Okay, good, yeah, that's very good to hear.
We're gonna wait on the screen, yeah, we should be covering it with the limits, eight to ten weeks, I hope.
Yeah.
We'll get that installed.
Okay.
I guess the other one, I talked about was the pool, about the voids. Emily had mentioned here, if you want to open it this year, um, they're going to call for immediate, with the parking rec board on that. Or I guess what is, move forward.
Um, so on our agenda, I asked for the building and grounds committee to get together. We'll, we'll discuss with building and grounds and then we'll move to the park and rec. I think that the TerraCon report was provided. And from the sampling, it appeared that the shell had minimal soil composition or, and then there wasn't large voids underneath the shell. However, the decking around the pool is where most of the soil, of the soil and the voids are at, which, again, if you, if you were to go out and look at the pool, you can tell around the decking area, it's, it's wavy. I mean, you can tell with its separation. They also identified some new cracks within the pool that occurred. However, staff is gonna make every effort to open the pool and operate the pool. And because we discussed the whole that, since we're so far into the season, and we, it takes time to line up lifeguards, that it was best to go ahead and give it an opportunity to open. And then also because the community, you know, a lot of our daycare providers and after-school programs have already, you know, scheduled programming around that, so again, we will proceed with opening it and then have that discussion, as you were saying, council member Martinez, and then bring it back to the park and rec to work through that process then, over the next month.
One question too, what about the pool, but it kind of reminded me, I can't find it now, but there was a comment about detecting like six graves or something in the cemetery, and there was a comment about it being kind of a high number. Um, let me look, is that, um, horrible? Um, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but.
It would probably be, was it in Max Park and Rec report? Because they're doing the locates.
Well, I just locate, yeah, I just looked at that and.
Because we have had, Emily does the locates and we have had quite a few, so I wonder if he was documenting that part.
Can you just explain what that process is, like what that means, like, oh, did six or so grave locates, which is a high number, so that's unfortunate?
The, so the locate process, you're either doing locate for typically one of two reasons. You're doing a locate to put the headstone in, so it could be somebody who has been deceased for a longer period of time and they're now putting the headstone in, or it's somebody who has recently passed away. And they have to go down there to actually locate the pins for where the space is, whether it be for cremations or for full body interference.
Okay, because I just didn't know what that process looked like, but.
Yeah, so Emily takes, Emily gets the call or she gets the email from Henderson Barker, and then she reaches out to our department head to allow him to go down and be able to locate it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Are there comments or questions for folks on?
Cody Franklin, my department. I'd like to thank the city of Rochelle, Illinois, they're gonna be traveling over here next week to help us repair the OP's turbos.
Right.
Logistically, this has been, we've been trying to get everything together for the last probably five or six months. We're having Fairbanks Morris Techs come up from Texas and getting all the parts together to try to get that OP back up and functionable. It sounds like it's finally gonna happen next week, so.
Okay, good. Okay, any other comments? Next on the agenda is the report on the fire department. And council member Preisek and I met as part of that committee on the twenty-fourth. The, there was a question asked about, we need to stagger the terms of the three of the four members that are appointed from the city, the mayor, whoever is mayor is a constant on the committee. And then the initial staggering is one person has a one-year term, another person has a two-year term, and then a three-year term. And so before this goes into effect on July first, we'll need to stagger those terms. We've been working a lot on the, on the bylaws and we had a long meeting to go over the bylaws, and we're waiting for the draft of what we felt we agreed on in the meeting to be completed, so we can look at that. And then the next meeting will be on April fourteenth at six thirty at the fire station. So it's, again, it's an open meeting, and so members of public and members of council are welcome there in addition to council member Preisek and myself who are on the committee. There also was a question about how the council responded to the budget request. We have, the committee has approved the budget, that is under the cert, the knowledge that the council has to approve the budget and that there's no elimination of that responsibility of the council by anything that we do on this committee. My response to that was that we presented the information on the amount that the city would be budgeting for the delivery of these services, and that I didn't hear any comments back from members of the council. So that's what I have to report, and I'll turn it over to council member Preisek for anything else to add to that.
No, I think he explained it pretty well about how it's working through the process, and the bylaws have taken maybe a little bit longer, but to get it all right, it's gonna be a process, so I think we're there at the end of the, we just have to get it approved.
Yeah.
That go from there.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any questions on that? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number ten, vendor voucher claims, vendor voucher list number one, and the amount of five hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and six cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The, those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the vendor voucher list is approved. Next up is item number eleven, public comments and/or correspondence. It's a time that's set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed in the agenda. And no action will be taken on those, but people are to state their name, address for the record and keep comments to two minutes. Are there public comments? Yes.
My name is Paul, nice and dry. I'm speaking today under the protection of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. Everything I express here is my personal opinion, okay, shared in the spirit of transparency and civic responsibility. The time has come for you, mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, shock that's not here, and city manager leaders to step down from their position, their conduct, their decision-making, and their ongoing disregard for community concerns that damaged the public's trust and falling short of ECO standards expected of elected and appointed officials. In addition to what I believe are serious and repeated missteps by the city administration, I would like to bring your attention to what I view as an attempt by the city attorneys to suppress my constitutional right to speak. Because I have filed lawsuits, because I filed a lawsuit against the city, I was told again and again not to address this council. I believe in my opinion, it's a clear attempt to silence me, and I view it as an infringement of my First Amendment right. It is also my opinion that the city attorney, along with city administration, is advising the council to ignore my concerns in the form of complaints that I personally have submitted against city manager leaders. Instead of receiving responses from this council, whom the public elects and expects to listen, it has been the city's attorney replying on your behalf or no reply at all. That to me signals a disturbing lack of accountability. I have video and documentary evidence of what I consider to be unprofessional conduct, particularly by city manager leader toward me. I'm more than willing to share this with the public so that others can see and judge for themselves what has happened to me. Also, most recently, I personally spoke with Ken and Krista, and several others of the city. Of, you know, that's part of this city that, that has some really deep concerns too. So I'm hoping that now that they see me bringing this to the attention of the public, that they'll be coming forward as well to speak. It is my belief that the most honorable path forward, for the good of West Liberty, is for those responsible to step down. Only then we can begin to repair the damage and move forward together in honesty and integrity and actually show some accountability and transparency in this city.
Thank you. Are there other public comments? Are there other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to city council public comments, so start with council member Martinez. Council member Schultz.
Yes, I did have a couple of questions concerning the pool and where we were with the study. And of course, it's in a very certain, we see the agenda, it's all. of course, it's in a very certain, we see the agenda, it's all answered through the city manager's report and being provided.
Okay, all right, council member Domingos. Council member Parisic.
No.
Okay. All right, um, and I assume that covered ca- correspondence, but if someone, I didn't separate those out, so. Um, or I did separate those out, excuse me on that, um, city manager Gertz.
Just a follow up, um, I did share, I spoke with Scott Peters today uh, by phone uh, to personally reach out to him and go through um, the steps that the city has taken uh, with regards to his complaint that he um, provided to uh, Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin on Marshall Bovens.
Ben Poo was presented by council member, yeah.
And so um, we um, part of that communication was is that the West Liberty Police Department has taken additional steps to patrol uh, Prairie Street. And um, in addition to that, additional steps to patrol parking violations. Um, I did follow up with him to explain about that we no longer have the smallest uh, trash container available, we only offer um, the other two sizes and um, then he had shared, he he'd seen a street light and then I directed him to in the future to know where to go online if he wanted to file any more complaints and said that that, you know, we don't see that as a negative, we see that as a positive of all of us doing our part with any type of loosen. And I also further explained where the street lights were at. Um, he did uh, communicate that he had seen um, the officers on Prairie Street and um, had noticed that, you know, there had been some, some work being done with the parking, however, it went back to and I said it's work in progress, they continue to educate with the, with the parking. And so, and I followed up with an email and CC'd uh, McFerrin and um, just so that we have closed up that conversation.
All right, um, how about city clerk, can you?
I just want to remind um, city council that Emily and I will be out at IMFO A. I will be receiving my finance officer certification on the tenth. Um, so we will be out at the office next week, but we will be able to respond via email if you need us.
Okay.
Good job, Sherry.
Thank you.
And Brittany and I will be at the Iowa Little Summit uh, for the.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to uh, item number twelve, um, new business, uh, first is a discussion and appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty on matching grant application for economic development requests for one twenty East Third Street um, area of West Liberty, uh, W L E F E LLC. Um, so first is discussion and then a motion and then consent uh, vote on this, so discussion.
Mayor Council, um, the matching grant, um, that's being applied for years for the one twenty East Third Building Project. Um, Lee Lee started the project a year ago for this building and applied for the catalyst grant with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Unfortunately, the grant wasn't awarded at that time, so um, then it was, uh, Lee Lee then uh, through their work, um, started the process to reapply for the catalyst grant for uh, this year. And so um, we've continued that work and part of that is um, submission of the matching grant is um, the project and the city's portion of the contribution to uh, meet those application requirements. And so um, the first round of that application, the pre-approval was completed by Lee Lee and now we're going to complete the rest of the application to submit it.
Whether further, is there further discussion or questions on the part of the council?
This is the building with police and emergency agency, correct, downtown? No, very good.
Hearing no further discussion, um, is there a motion to approve? Should approve? Is there a second?
Okay.
Um, then it is a consent vote, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it, we've now moved to item number uh, twelve B, resolution twenty twenty five zero four zero one hyphen two three four. A resolution to accept and extend the contract for city manager uh, Gertz, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve, very delicious.
Is there a second? Again, is there discussion?
I did want to um, say that I think we're just maybe pulling the trigger a little too quickly here because like in, in your, in her report, she'd said that she's graduating in June and the contract specifically says that her requirement is to graduate um, as part of the original contract. So I just think, you know, we're just, why are we doing this now instead of in June? Um, so I, I would like to table this, but the motion's already been made, so.
That was my understanding as well, uh, city manager Gertz would come to bigger schooling, which she's been working at um, in the timeframe of the contract that we provided. I also did have a question on within the it's number four in the employment agreement. Was concerning the eight percent. Yes, eight percent, I believe for raise and pay, annual raises. Is that eight percent for each fiscal year twenty six and twenty seven? Or eight percent per year that we have that?
It's in line with the, so the, the wage salary policy. It is exactly what all city employees, they have up to, based on your performance, that is the highest that you can receive in your point system. So that's just being reflective of, to be consistent with all city employees. So it's not separate.
It's the highest per year.
So the matrix, there's the block matrix and the three percent is the middle calculating. And so then based on your performance and whether you're entry middle or at your top level, um, we, we use eight percent as you, as the highest percentage based on the highest that you can score. Um, again, it's up to council if they want to um, go outside of the matrix. Um, but it's just again, making the agreement consistent with the, the staffing uh, policy.
So that, it sounds like eight percent per year.
That's the policy every year for evaluation.
Okay. Not eight percent total for two years, but like four percent, four percent, eight percent.
Yeah, it's based.
Was that your question?
And that's a possible up to.
Yeah.
Not, it's not just a, okay.
What we did uh, was um, that Lee asked what she wanted the salary to be and then uh, we voted on the salary um, after we completed the evaluation. Regarding uh, the completion of the um, what we put in the evaluation, the completion of the coursework that Lee uh, is completing, that's uh, will be due, uh, will be finished in June and it is a, a thing that uh, if I remember correctly, I wasn't here at the time that she asked for participation and the council uh, granted that and that uh, we're under a contract um, that is up now and that's why the timing uh, we're uh, doing it. The expectation is that she will continue on and uh, complete the training that she's participating in.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, so when that was originally placed in a contract, it doesn't coincide with Lee, the college schedule. So there's, I mean, and then that was the part of the performance. So the contract and the performance are two separate. The contract is the agreement to contract and then the performance is the measurement of the work that you're doing and meeting that completion.
Yeah, I get that, I was up against that with my new job, they wanted me to complete something within a year, but the schedule didn't align. But I think the original contract had said completion by June thirty of twenty twenty three and.
It's a eighteen month course though.
Right, but we're in twenty twenty five. I'm not saying that you haven't tried, I know you've been going to class and, and doing this and I know you're going to graduate in June.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I finish?
No, because you're venturing onto performance.
No, I'm not. I, I'm saying, i- in your report, you're saying that you're going to finish in June and I have every confidence I do will, but I'm saying, why are we extending the contract right now instead of just waiting until June, until that's completed? Because also in the original contract says we as a council have the accountability to maintain that this is a contractual agreement with contractual requirements. And I feel like if we go beyond that, we're not saying what we agreed to in the original contract. That's all I'm saying, I'm not trying to make this difficult, I'm saying that we have to make sure that we're persistent and that we are following what we agreed to.
And I understand and I appreciate your input on that. But what I'm communicating is that performance is separate from the contract. The attorney has renewed the contract, the contract is going to expire in order for me to I, I mean, and the best way I can explain it is that unfortunately, the contract and the evaluation were not originally put together at the same time, practice usually is, is the city manager's contracts, their anniversary, it's an anniversary date, so normally this would have came up on the annual and this is a situation where you have contracts separate from performance evaluation. So right now.
I'm just saying what was written in the original is, and it hasn't been completed and I would just like for the council to understand, if we extend this right now, it doesn't mean that Lee's going to be out of a job, you can still work for the city and keep working at that, but then bring it back in June, you know, and have a celebration and everything is good to go and we can sign the contract.
The uh, contract expires, so.
What do you do in the meantime then?
Well, there's other.
That's what I.
Positions where a contract is expired and not been extended and the person has completely done a fine job after that, so.
Just so I understand, then how do you proceed in the meantime? They don't, if they don't have a contract? Two, until she finishes the coursework, I mean, that's what, I mean, I'm just struggling that, I'm trying to figure that out.
Well. I under, I, if, if a city attorney has information on this, that would be really beneficial to understand what those options are, but um, I don't, I don't think it's wise of us to extend a contract when the requirement hasn't been met in the, in the original contract.
Well, we have to have an option in what we do in the meantime.
Right, so that's why we table this.
The uh, the contract, this contract was reviewed with the city attorney um, as it was written and developed.
For the extension.
For, for the contract that is proposed tonight.
They're talking about the new one.
Mm-hmm.
So the original one was obviously approved by the previous attorneys, what they're, I mean, the thing was that the new one that's sitting in the forum, you, they um, the mayor has sent that to the attorney for review.
Yeah.
And the, this attorney didn't have any comment on the requirements not being met?
That would be something with the mayor.
I, I didn't hear any comments back um, on that uh, when I discussed it with the attorney.
The only conversation we had was just identifying that the performance evaluation had been completed but the, this is a contract, not for performance.
Right. We've done uh, the evaluation and we've done the uh, setting of the salary, so it's I think council member Parisic said it correctly, what do we have in the meantime if we don't approve a contractor?
Well.
Probation period?
I, I, if we table this until the next meeting, we can extend the original contract in like, until that is completed or until other things, you know, are completed, I think we just need more time on that.
The original contract doesn't have the proofed information, that was why we went to the work of updating the contract.
You mean this being the updated contract?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not being stupid, Lee, it, I'm just, if the original contract did not have.
The meaning is outdated, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Like, why did we approve it if it wasn't accurate?
It expires on April fifth, so the contract that city manager Gertz is currently working on will expire on the fifth of April.
But we're, we can still, I mean, we can still work, right? And get paid.
I don't see, I don't see a basis for that.
Okay.
Yeah, because, so here's the thing, the contracts are usually done, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean that you still don't have performance in management over the city manager. The contract is just that, it's the contract that you're entering in um, with the city manager. And then there's the separate, there is the piece of management and performance evaluation. So just because you're, you don't approve or you approve a contract, doesn't take, doesn't change the fact that there's still management.
Obligations, right, including uh, the requirement that the coursework that you're doing is Drake being completed. So once she completes her coursework, do we make the new contract?
No, I mean, my hope is that we approve the contract tonight uh, so that we can continue the services, I'm interrupted. We still have the option of supervision if she doesn't complete the coursework or other aspects of the uh, contract and that's grounds for uh, disciplinary action and as it would be with any employee with whom we have a contract.
And I would just be careful because you guys are right on the line where you guys are starting to talk about the performance side of it.
Yeah, sorry.
You can definitely communicate that within the contract, it says that she needs to complete her schooling, but as far as like disciplinary and stuff like that, you guys are going to want to keep that to a minimum because she didn't require her, she didn't request a closed session.
Yeah.
And I, I guess I would have liked to have seen a closed session just so we could talk about this more freely. Um, I just don't think we had enough time to discuss this as a full council.
So, so I guess I'm needing more information, I mean, so a closed session is because you're requesting a closed session for your performance? Because the performance is not tied to the contract. The contract is just the contract of the city man, the city manager's position. The performance is just within that.
I understand what you're saying, Lee, I, I don't, I just don't agree, I don't know, not that I don't agree with you, I just don't understand it fully to where I agree with that, like if we're talking about a contract about an employer of, an employee at the city, we have to take into consideration the whole package because it's a contract, it's a legal document, right? So that's why I'm, I'm confused and I wish we could have discussed further. Um, but I see what you're saying, I, I still am not comfortable with there being language in the original contract saying that, you know, there, that schooling has to be clean, completed by this date and I know that you're saying it wasn't your fault, I believe you.
Mm-hmm.
But the, I, I'm not, I'm not okay.
I guess what I'm trying to, what I was just trying to say is that when that original contract was created, no one identified the timeline of the college course. So therefore the verbiage was there and so again, I mean, the the, the contract itself doesn't take away from in June, if, if the city manager does not complete uh, the CPM course, then there's a performance evaluation of failing to meet that expectation and then also that, you know, failing um, under my job duties and that piece of it. But the contract itself really, it's, I mean, that, again, I mean, that's the reason why the attorneys this time around did not have the type of language because that's more geared toward the, your performance and your management of the city manager and their goals and their expectations. Not a part of the contract.
There are further discussion?
I was hoping to review the evaluation again, just to roll in with this, but I was unable to see that as well. And again, we've done not moving to performance or anything, but.
There are further discussion?
If, so if this doesn't pass, I think the next, next step would be to reach out and try to get more time extended on the original contract.
So if it doesn't pass, then that's essentially the council saying, we're not, you don't, we're not contracting your city manager.
I think it's the council saying that, I mean, does every city manager have to have a contract? Yes. Where's the law that states that every city manager has to have a contract?
Because that's your.
Because you're an employee of the city.
That's within your code and that's within our job titles and all city managers. I don't, you're asking me a question to go out to the Iowa code where it's not going to be in the Iowa code. Because the only thing that's under Iowa code is that every city is required to have a city clerk. From the city manager perspective, that's based off of our city code. And then within my job description and your hiring, then that's the practice of having a contracted employee. And the city manager is the only contracted employee of the city.
That's, that's how we hired her, was we hired her per contract. So it's, that's how we hired the last several city managers, is we hired them per contract. So in order for them to be employed, they are employed via a contract. They're not hired by the, the city of staff. They are hired by us five and they're hired with a contract in place.
Not an appointed position. It's a contracted position. I would like to see the code.
It's, it's in the contract that we hire her for the amount of time agreed upon salary.
I think the current city code right now dictates that you have, that it's a city manager, mayor, council. The job description dictates the, the work and what the, what the position is. It's not an appointed position. And I don't have the city code in front of me to say specifically what it says in the code.
It's section 18A. It has appointment removal compensation of your city manager.
Section one.
One dash eight A dash one.
I'm trying to be conscious of what the city clerk has said about getting into performance here. But I don't understand what would be different with not approving the contract versus approving the contract. I, I, I understand what, what would be the dilemma that it would put the city in if we didn't approve the contract. But I don't understand what we would be giving up as a mayor and council by approving the contract.
If it's, if, if it's, this is where I'm seeing it, Mayor, like if it's really not up to us, then why is it on the agenda? If you're saying that we either approve it and we don't have a city, or we either approve it and can continue as a city or we don't approve it and don't have a city manager, then we don't really have a set. And that's what's upsetting, like that's, that's where I feel on the spot.
I, I don't believe that's what I said.
Well, I apologize if, if I misunderstood that, but right now I feel like we're in a predicament, predicament where if we don't approve this right away, then we're wrapped without a city manager. And I mean, to me, I would, I, I don't feel that we need a contract to have an employee of the city that's in the system, but I just wanted to see the obligations that was, that we can only agree upon, want to finish before we extend a contract.
Is there further discussion?
No, but Mayor, I did not see that Carol was on, so I won't be able to include her because I don't have it documented when she's doing. So I just want to make you aware.
Okay.
I won't be able.
So the vote needs to be among the four.
Yes, it will still be among the four.
Okay. All right. Is there further discussion? The clerk will call the roll.
Great. Schultz?
No.
Dominguez?
No.
Martinez? Parizic?
Yes.
Motion fails three to one.
It's my belief that we're without a city manager. Next up is Resolution 2024, 2025-0401-235. A resolution for disposal of city property stored at City Administrative Street Building, previously known as the E L E L C in West Liberty, Iowa. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will, it's a roll call vote, so the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Parizic?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. So council member Martinez and council member, uh, city Mayor Tim McFerrin are on the Buildings and Ground Committee. Do you have a possible date for meeting?
I would recommend that we hold off on making that appointment until
Okay.
you've resolved your city manager contract issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favors, or is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.